We will now reconvene the City Council's special meeting. And are there any final actions?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No final action tonight.
All right, we will now adjourn the City Council's special meeting and call to order the City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, July 11th. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Council members Chalamchela.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
And Roarbaugh is absent.
Okay, here. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, could I just make a brief statement?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to read a statement that Councilmember Anna Roarbaugh asked me to read at this meeting. As you'll notice, my seating colleague here is not here tonight. And Anna writes, "I received heartbreaking news this past weekend. My young 11-year-old nephew, Keone Hubbard, was killed suddenly in a boating accident while he was at a scout camp. I am now in Boston with my brother, his wife, and my 15-year-old niece." Sorry. "I feel confident that our dad has ushered his grandson into heaven, and they're already getting into mischief together. However, as you can imagine, all that knew him and love him are broken. There are no words. Thank you for your grace and patience, Anna." And Mayor, if I could request that we please adjourn the meeting in honor and memory of Keone Hubbard, who was taken far too soon.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any agenda updates?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor. There is additional information and a revised staff report, both for Item 15 on tonight's agenda. A copy has been previously provided to you, and they are also available on the table in the back.
Thank you. Would the Clerk please call the next item?
Your next item this evening is Business from the Floor, and you have one request to speak.
Okay, we have Business from the Floor. It is the public's opportunity to address the City Council concerning any item within the City Council's jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. Please keep in mind that the City Council is generally prohibited from discussing or taking action on any items that is not on the agenda. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. There is a speaker timer in front of the podium that will display the time you have remaining on your three minutes. The color will change to yellow when you have 30 seconds, and then turn to red and blink when your three minutes are up. We ask that everyone respect the three-minute limit to ensure that all speakers have an equal opportunity to address the City Council. And...
Okay, your one and only speaker tonight will be Anita Bogdanoff. Come on down.
Good evening, Anita.
My name is Anita Bogdanoff. I am a resident, homeowner, taxpayer, and voter in Folsom. I am here to express my opposition to the location of a card room at 400 Iron Point Drive. I do not believe a card room near any residential neighborhood in Folsom is a good decision. Members of our community have dedicated significant time and effort researching the potential impact of card rooms close to residential areas and card rooms in general. There is an abundance of information that supports our concerns for the potential of increased crime and safety issues. I only have three minutes, so I won't repeat statistics and study results, which have previously been presented. One argument we have heard from some of you, our City Council members, is that the card room formerly at East Bidwell did not experience the problems we are suggesting, implying that our concerns are exaggerated. It is important to note that the former card room and the proposed card room are different types of businesses, making any direct comparison inaccurate. These comparisons have also been previously presented. My request is not to completely dismiss the idea of a card room in Folsom, but rather to ensure it is not situated near a residential neighborhood. If you have any doubts regarding the safety and positive impact a card room would have on residents and businesses, please exercise your responsibility and vote against the King's Card Club location at 400 Iron Point Drive. I would like to end by sharing three quotes from Mayor Rodriguez's State of the City speech delivered in January of this year. Quote, "There is something special about Folsom, something magical, a deep sense of community, a spirit of generosity, and a culture of caring and support." Unquote. My second quote from Mayor Rodriguez's speech, quote, "Folsom has long been known as one of the safest cities in the country." Unquote. And the last quote I will read from Mayor Rodriguez's speech sums up why we are against a card room in any residential neighborhood in Folsom. Quote, "The most important investment our city can make is in the safety of our citizens." Unquote. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Would the Clerk please call the next item?
Your next item this evening is your first scheduled presentation. This will be a proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming July 16th to 22nd as National Zookeeper Week in the City of Folsom. Come on down. And on hand tonight to receive this proclamation are zookeepers Amy Vandermolen, Ricky Rocky Marshall, and Helen Chu, along with Zoo Supervisor Nicole Lemke and Zoo Manager Jocelyn Smeltzer. And I think they've brought some friends.
Any one of you visited a zoo here? Can you raise your hands? Yeah, y'all can join them. Yes, Katie. Ma'am, if I can hand over this to you, please. Okay, come up. Where are my glasses? I know. Once again, thank you. Thank you so much for being here and keeping our distinctive-by-nature and iconic asset for our town, Folsom Zoo. And today, our Zoo Manager, Jocelyn Smeltzer, is receiving this one on behalf of all our zookeepers. The proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming July 16th to 22nd, 2023, as a National Zookeeper Week in the City of Folsom. Whereas, the city zoo sanctuary plays a key role in the City of Folsom's goal to increase tourism, increase, more importantly, the quality of life for our residents, and build a community and contribute to the city's distinctive-by-nature. And whereas, zookeepers significantly contribute to the zoo sanctuary's mission statement of teaching responsible behavior towards all animals. And whereas, zookeepers meet and exceed the rigorous requirements of the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and the United States Department of Agricultural Rules and Regulations. Whereas, zookeepers diligently care for the zoo sanctuaries, many rescued animals comprising 40 different species, all of which are animals who could not survive in the wild. And whereas, zookeepers possess unique and exceptional skills, enabling them to create a behavioral environment items for the animals and the use of positive reinforcement training so that the animals may participate in their own vet care. And whereas, zookeepers work tirelessly to provide outstanding veterinary care, staying late and even coming early mornings to take care of animals that are ill and required additional treatments. And whereas, our zookeepers continuously demonstrate their unwavering dedication, including working weekends and holidays, even on the Christmas Day. Thank you, because our little animals has to eat, and the animals still need to be fed and taken care. Whereas, in these times of the crisis, such as the pandemic, when zookeepers were considered who? Essential workers to take care of our animals. Thank you. They exhibited the highest level of professionalism and creativity, ensured that all of the animals' needs were met despite limited resources and reduced staffing. Now, therefore, be it resolved. I, YK Chalamchela, on behalf of our Mayor Rodriguez and our City Council hereby proclaim July 16th to 22nd, 2023, as a National Zookeeper Week in the City of Folsom. Proclaim this 11th day of July, 2023. Let's give them a big round of applause, please. Once again, my sincere appreciation and thank you for you and all of your team members. Awesome. Would you like to share? Oh, 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 oh. Yes, ma'am.
I was going to say, can we hear who's present with us today? Animals?
Yes, please.
Sure. So I have Amy Vandermolen and Helen Chu here with our two ferrets. We have Storm and Quicksilver. They're outreach animals, and they go to programs with schools, and zoo camp kids enjoy them. And then Nicole Lemke is holding Ohana. She's an opossum that we rescued. She also enjoys going to camp, sometimes painting pictures for the kids. And then Rocky Marshall has Mushu, our bearded dragon, who's one of the outreach lizards. We didn't bring a snake. We didn't know if you'd appreciate that. But Mushu also goes on journeys to be an ambassador animal. So all of our animals are rescues, and you can come down and see them. We're open Thursday through Sunday. Thank you.
I was mistaken. It's not five people, nine people here, including our four little animals. Once again, thank you so much. Awesome. Can we take a picture with our little animals, too? Yeah, please. Those are important, not me. So the little animals. Thank you. Once again, thank you so much. Ma'am.
Okay, would the Clerk please call the next item?
Your next item this evening is your consent calendar. And as a reminder, Item 15 has been amended with additional information.
Okay, any items to poll for discussion or all to change a motion?
I'll move Items 2 through 17 and 15 as amended.
I will second.
All right, would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Chalamchela.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes.
All right, would the Clerk please call the next item?
Okay, next is your new business, Item Number 18. This is Resolution Number 11069, amending Resolution Number 10479 to revise the master fee schedule for library services, to remove fines and adjust the fee for selected library services as of July 11th, 2023.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Tom Gurnison, your Library Director. The resolution in front of you tonight makes a number of small changes to the library's master fee schedule. But what I'd like to talk about is a change that is recommended by your Library Commission and which we think will make a larger change for our residents. And that is the recommendation that the library discontinue the collection of late fines. To be clear on what we're talking about this evening, when a customer checks out a book from the library, that item will continue to have a due date. Customers will continue to receive reminders when that item is due. They'll also receive reminders show that item become overdue. And if they keep the item for too long, they'll be billed for that item, and they won't be able to use library services until they either return it or pay for that missing item. What will change, though, is that we'll no longer continue to collect the nickel a day, the quarter a day, or a dollar a day for each day that an item is overdue. That will bring us in line with what's become a national best practice. In the map that you see before you, this is foreign region, the jurisdictions in green are those that have gone fine-free. Those that are blue are the ones that continue to have fines, and those that are yellow are someplace in between. There is a very fascinating and long conversation about how we got this place as a profession, which I will save for another evening. Suffice it to say that it's based on a few findings. The first is important and is in some way surprising. And that's that time and again, libraries have found that there's not a relationship between having late fines and how long an item is overdue. That is, that when libraries go from having late fines to not having late fines, they don't see a change in overdue activity. Instead, what they find is that more items come back to the library, which makes sense. You know, if you remove the incentive to return that item, you're less likely to get it. Libraries that have removed their late fines have also found an increase in the number of new library customers, an increase in library use by existing customers, and overall more positive relationships with our residents, not to mention improved staff efficiencies and saving the time that it takes to negotiate what can be challenging customer service interactions with our residents. There's also another finding. I don't know how to put this. Most of our customers at some point will return an item overdue. That's just kind of a universal truth. Where the difference is, though, is in which customers are more likely to be blocked from using library services. Study after study and lived experience of library after library is that those members of the community disproportionately come from lower-income households. So whether a fixed-income senior, certain communities of color, families where there's not the attainment of an advanced educational degree, are all families that are less likely to be able to use the library. Here in Folsom, we don't collect that level of detail when it comes to our demographics, at least with library customers. But it's probably not a coincidence that our census tract that has the highest level of poverty is also the census tract that has the highest percentage of blocked library There is an added rub that comes from being the last library in Sacramento County to still have late fines. This is something that's enormously confusing and frustrating to our residents. Time and again, when customers turn something back in that's overdue, they'll turn them in, and they'll say, well, that one's free, and that one's free, and that one's $5. And they kind of want to say, well, you know, tell me about that $5 one. What's going on there? And library staff need to explain that although you are a Folsom resident, and this is Folsom Library, and that is a Folsom item, Sacramento County libraries have decided to go fine-free, whereas Folsom continues to charge late fines. And also, your account is now blocked, and you won't be able to use the library until you pay that difference. There are other areas of inequity, and that is if that situation is reversed, Sacramento County residents can turn back in Folsom items for free because their systems are defaulted to waive fines on check-in. Also, a good number of clever Folsom residents have found ways just to skip the fines altogether. And that is if they check an item out from Folsom and return it to a library outside of Folsom, they can do so without incurring a fine in the first place. What that does is, again, let them avoid the fine, but it also creates more delays for Folsom residents. Because instead of us checking it in and putting it on our shelf same day, it gets, you know, returned to an offsite location where it goes into a box. And the next day, it's picked up by delivery where it goes into another box. It's eventually sorted and comes back to Folsom, but it's a delay of several more days and more work that just doesn't need to happen. Also, residents have found that they can just simply have the fines waived by calling Sacramento. Sacramento's main call center is out of state, and there's been at least one conversation where Folsom library staff informed a customer that they'll need to pay their late fine. And then the Folsom director talked to that customer and said, well, you'll need to pay the late fine. And then while inside Folsom Library, that person has called Sacramento, and they were happy to take away that fine. So some reasons for your consideration to allow us to discontinue that practice. I'd also just say that it makes good business. You know, in exchange for only about 1% of our budget and revenue, we're actively blocking between 8 and 11% of our residents from using the library. We are creating headaches for many more, and we're scaring some of our residents away from using the library in the first place. So for your consideration, may I answer any questions?
Tom, if you don't mind, can go back. Yeah, number five, Slide 5. Just for everyone's benefit, including mine, all the green ones are part of Sacramento County, and they made one policy decision to make that.
This is correct. Sacramento is a complex entity. It's a JPA consisting of different jurisdictions. But when that one policy decision was made, it impacted all libraries.
Good, and we are catching up with that policy decision quickly.
Yes, very much. I take a lot of pride in the work that we do at the library. And when there's something that makes us seem like a second-rate service, it's something that I'm looking to change.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions?
I just want to make a comment, a couple of comments. So first of all, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Thank you, I know, to my appointment to the Library Commission. I see Colleen Shannon back there, and she brought this to my attention a few months ago. And I know there are going to be people who look at this and say, well, you're just removing consequences for bad behavior, and, you know, because that's something that I would normally say. But as you've demonstrated, there are people who are, you know, some of the more savvy users have figured out a way to get around this. We have basically the equivalent of an elementary school that is blocked from using the library or from checking out books, which obviously is not good. But you also shared with me a couple situations where, you know, somebody was hospitalized for an extended length of time, and so had a library book that, you know, had a good reason for not turning it back in on time. I think also you told me about a special-needs child who, maybe a special-needs adult who had taken something out, and there's no mechanism for you to even waive fines on those specific cases. So to me, this is just really a value judgment, just like we want to have, you know, like we're willing to subsidize the aquatic center so that we have a citizenry who is comfortable around water and, you know, knows how to swim. You know, we want a literate citizenry. And so I think this makes sense, and the fact that you said that the fines don't really equate to, you know, more access to the collection or whatever for other people. So thank you for bringing this to our attention. Thank you to the Library Commissioners for pursuing this. I know it's been a couple of years coming, and I think this is a good thing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good. I have one more comment also. You know, I usually see, you know, where I grew up, libraries are the knowledge base, right? When you put some ticketed, you know, cost to it, people try to, you know, step back. So I'm so glad we are keeping this knowledge open and, you know, free for everybody to come and enjoy. And the same time, if somebody is not returning their library book, then they better return before they can get one more kind of thing. So you already have some policies already in that.
This is correct, yes.
Right, thank you. Again, I'm going to echo my colleagues' comments. Thank you so much for bringing this. It's not that Folsom is last, but the entire Sacramento passed one policy, and that's why they all become green. We are catching up with them quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Tom. Do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, you have two requests to speak under this item. First will be Rupini Jana Legata, who will be followed by Vijay Jana Legata.
Good evening, Rupini.
Good evening, dear Councilmembers. I have been resident of Folsom for the last 21 years. I'm here today to express my support to eliminate late fee for our library. I trust the research that consistently said late fines have negligible effect on whether or how long items are kept overdue, which means there is no positive effect due to late fee. Also, confirmed by the hundreds of libraries across the United States that have converted to a fine-free model, that removal of late fines has increased item return rates, increase in library usage, and in overall circulation of items. Negative effect of the late fee would be it discourages the use, usage of library by those that are not very ardent users of library. In Sacramento County, I heard most libraries have eliminated the late fee. This is not a very good distinction to have. Sacramento systems, Sacramento library systems are defaulted to waive fees on check-in, whereas Folsom library staff are unable to waive their fines, but agents at the main SPL call center are willing to do so. Patterns having been driving to, they have been driving to nearby Orangeville to return items. This inconsistency in policies among local libraries is confusing and frustrating for Folsom residents. So it is viewed as a negative customer service. Returning items at other libraries also creates more work for staff and longer wait times for Folsom residents as items that are returned to another location are transported to the downtown sorting center and then back to Folsom where they again need to be scanned and filed. So another, also, another important point is that fines are significant barrier to lower-income households disproportionately exclude the members of vulnerable communities. So I believe eliminating late fee would have positive impact on Folsom library's mission of inspire lifelong learning, enrich lives, and connect our diverse community.
Thank you, Rupini.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, our next speaker will be Vijay Jana Legata.
Good evening, Vijay.
Good evening. Thank you for the time to talk to you guys. And first of all, thank you all for your service, voluntary service for the City of Folsom, making this city a good place to live, like a good reputation. Actually, most of my points have already been covered by fear, so I don't know what to talk again. So in any case, yeah, the main point like I wanted to make is that, like, a lot of people might say, like, okay, why are we rewarding bad behavior for not returning the overdue books? It's not exactly, you know, we can't assume the negativity like that, and then it's, there are a lot of reasons why there may be overdue. So the library staff doesn't have a way to, you know, remove that fee. And that's one thing. And again, we don't have, we should not have that kind of dubious distinction that, you know, out of 29 libraries, we are the only library that is still, you know, assessing the fee. That's not exactly a good distinction to have. And right now, we have 3,101 Folsom patterns cards are blocked because of this overdue fee, which is not a cool thing. That's 9% of the total patterns, which is not, I mean. And there are like 822 youth patterns that are, whose cards are blocked because of the overdue items. I mean, we can't, you know, that's not a good message to give to the youth people because, you know, we have to encourage their reading habits, and that's, I mean, right. And finally, the fines are just 1% of that library revenue. So we are not exactly, you know, it's not giving, it's not like, it's not, the fines are not the main source of the revenue, obviously. So it's just 1%. So it's like, we can afford, I think. So that's all I wanted to say, and thank you again for hearing this. I'm one of the commissioners, library commissioners, and we've been working on this for almost more than a year, I think. So please make a decision to waive the fee.
Thank you, Vijay.
All right, are there any other requests to speak tonight?
We have no further requests to speak on this item.
Okay.
I have a question for Tom. Can we have a blockbuster video amnesty day also?
Too late, Councilmember.
I will happily move adoption of Resolution Number 11069, and thank you to Vijay and Rupini, and Colleen Shannon, and Catherine Allerman. We've got three library commissioners here.
Second and second.
And third.
Okay, would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Chalamchela.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes.
All right, would the Clerk please call the next item?
Okay, your last item this evening is Item Number 19. This is consideration of execution of a MOU with the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District and the City of Rancho Cordova to share the cost of a Folsom-Cordova Unified School District reorganization feasibility study and direction to staff.
Thank you very much. And I just want to acknowledge that Folsom-Cordova Board Chair Dave Reed and also Associate Superintendent Sean Martin are here, and I appreciate them being in the chambers. So this item is indeed to discuss the, I've been asked to execute an MOU with Folsom-Cordova to share in the costs of a feasibility study related to potentially splitting the district. And I felt like I wanted to get direction from the Council on that before moving ahead. So next slide, just for a little background. So on June 8th, as So on June 8th, as some who are watching this may remember, and this body certainly remembers, the Folsom City Council, the Rancho City Council, and the Folsom-Cordova Board all met jointly in a special meeting, and the sole purpose of the item was to discuss the, to hear a presentation on what would be the process for moving forward with potentially splitting the Folsom-Cordova School District and, and then from there, a feasibility study. So what they were asking for, the school board was asking, was that each of the city councils, Folsom and Rancho Cordova, provide some type of consensus direction to the board as whether, as to whether they wanted to move forward with a feasibility study conducted by a consulting firm called School Services of California. And the purposes of that feasibility study is to evaluate the potential reorganization of the school district into two separate united, unite, unified school districts against their nine statutory criteria that govern whether or not you can split a school district. So next slide. More background, at that meeting, the Folsom City Council did indeed provide consensus direction, and, you know, I think I heard from all four that were there that they were very much in on moving ahead with the feasibility study. Heard from the Rancho City Council that they were as well. So that concluded that special meeting. So then, just a few days later, the Folsom-Cordova School Board had a regular meeting, and they were again hearing this issue, and they actually tabled any action because they wanted some more information brought back to them as a board. And one of the requests that they made was that the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District Superintendent reach out to the two city partners, which would be the Folsom City Council and the Rancho City Council, to determine if they were willing to assist or cover the cost of this feasibility study to be, to be provided by School Services of California. Cost splitting was not something that was discussed at that special meeting, so this was, you know, a kind of a new item. So the school, FCUSD Superintendent Sarah Koligian did indeed reach out to me, and she asked if I'd be willing to enter into this MOU on behalf of the city. I asked her, would one-third be an appropriate contribution? And she said, yep, that sounds right. And so the idea is that the Folsom-Cordova would enter into the agreement with the consultant, and we, as the City of Folsom, would reimburse them for one-third. So we would not be parties to the actual agreement with the consultant, we would just be helping to pay for it. And then finally, the City of Rancho Cordova had already agreed to pay its one-third portion, their city manager got direction from their city council. Next slide. And just a little background on kind of what this costs. School Services of California, again, this is the consultant that would, would conduct the feasible study, says that they'll perform the study for $72,500 plus expenses. They define expenses as actual out-of-pocket expenses such as travel, meals, shipping, and duplication of materials. Their scope of work includes one presentation to the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District Board, and if additional meetings or presentations are required that are not described in their proposal, for example, if they have to come back to the board and present or present again, then that time will be charged at a rate of $310 per hour per consultant in addition to actual and reasonable expenses. Just to repeat, the ideal cost-sharing agreement per the superintendent would be one-third for each City of Folsom, City of Rancho Cordova, and Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. This expenditure, as I know you all know, was actually not contemplated in the budget that you just adopted. It wasn't something that we knew about or discussed, and so if it's something that the council provides me direction with, I'd need to implement budget reduction strategies to include this line item to be able to make sure we came in with a balanced budget at the end of the year. Next slide. And then finally, I recommend that you give me direction. That is the item, thank you. Happy to take any questions, and thank you, Tom, for running those slides, appreciate it.
I don't have any questions.
I'd like to comment on this, if it's okay. With absolute respect for the impassioned reasons why other people might feel like this is a worthwhile endeavor, the, sum total of the presentation by the consultant at the meeting that we had left me with very little confidence that the thresholds that are necessary to be able to make a split of the district were achievable. And the question we were asked on that day was not, do we endorse splitting the district, really? The question we were asked is, are we willing to publicly say that we don't think the district should be split, or that the school district shouldn't pursue the information? That's probably the second thing. Should they pursue this information? Should they pursue this analysis? And I was willing to let the school district spend its money on pursuing the analysis and determining if they had a reasonable way of achieving the nine criteria, but had no confidence that they actually can achieve the nine criteria. Principally among those criteria is that you don't end up demographically splitting up less advantaged from more advantaged students. And the, the basic nature of the boundaries of our two cities are going to effectively ensure that that will be the case. So I am not in favor of Folsom spending money on splitting the district. I think we're stronger together, and I don't see any real practical reason for doing the analysis when there is a gigantic hurdle that doesn't seem surmountable in front of us. So that's my opinion.
So I'll give a couple thoughts, and obviously, I am a former Folsom-Cordova School Board member. Since that joint meeting, I actually had lunch with two former school board members, one of whom was on the board when this process was tried maybe 20 years ago. What that person told me is that, yes, there are nine criteria, but the consultant doesn't come back and say, you meet this, 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 but you don't meet this, this, or this. It's just kind of like, here they are, and here's, it's, it's, it's not kind of black or white, or yes or no, it's just kind of, you know, so while I understand what you're saying, that maybe it seems unlikely, you know, my understanding is they didn't, you know, technically meet all, all nine last time, and it still went to a vote. It's just the vote went down. So although we aren't the ones driving this effort this time, I, I think the district is, you know, valuable partner of ours, and regardless of what happens with Folsom and Rancho Cordova, I would like to see this council put in an application to, I'm not sure what the correct term is, but basically to annex the part of American River Canyon that's currently in the San Juan District and bring that into Folsom-Cordova, or maybe Folsom, you know, if it's just our own district in the future. So I'm, I'm willing to partner with them and share in the cost, go through the process, not only for the, the whole Folsom-Cordova thing, but then also just for our own education in terms of how we, we bring that one section that's in the City of Folsom, but it's in the San Juan School District, into our district.
I know, I was mentioning to Elaine, as soon as she reached out to Rosario and I, I was under the same impression what Mike, you know, they are going to take up the chunk of funding mechanism, wherever it is, and run through that one. We did give our consent on that day to collect the information, to do the research and to, because the last time we did collect the information about our schools and our demographics and the ethnicities and the rankings and all those, almost 23 years ago. That's, we have grown a lot. And also, we are growing. So it gives us a quantifiable, a tangible numbers about our schools and the demographics, how it has been changed. If anybody hears, you know, South of 50 is widely demographically diverse community, how that is playing in our school system. So I, on that day, said yes for the, the research and collect the information and present to the board. As we came to know about the cost, and my initial consent I gave Elaine by talking to her, it's a, as Sarah was mentioning, it's a partnership. Rancho, our neighbor, and we work with them in so many other things. You know, now they are growing technology footprint, we are growing technology footprint. The healthy blood flow, you know, sometimes the small things may give that a little bit bitter taste. So that's where I'm looking at our school district, which serves the both cities, and our friends, neighbors, Rancho Cordova. It's a goodwill kind of investment from City of Folsom in two ways. One, to collect our own data, how we have grown in last 23 years. That helps how we are going to grow in next 20 years. South of 50 is going to grow next 20 years. It'll give us a sense. And number two, we have to always build a goodwill with our neighbors. So in that regard, I did, said yes to Elaine, yes, let's go with a partnership, $72,500. And also, I did express my concern, the hourly rate of additional work, $310 is a lot. Hopefully, I trusted my colleagues at the school board, you know, they will make a more financial sound judgment, not just giving for a small things, $310 for the vendor. So I'm personally in support for those two things. Build a stronger relationship with our partners to collect the information what we need. This is not going to lead to the school board split or not, that's a long way to go.
I don't have any comments, but it looks like we have one more request to speak.
One request to speak from Colleen Shannon.
Hello, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Obviously, I was here originally for the Library Commission and the fines, but the idea of splitting the district kind of grabs my heart, and I just want to address something specifically that Elaine mentioned, in that if we, as a city, agree to shoulder this financial burden, it means that we have to cut costs somewhere else in our budget. And I feel like you guys have gone through a very rigorous progress, or a very rigorous process in figuring out who gets money and who doesn't get money, and at the risk of going on the record very unpopularly, this feels like a fool's errand to, to chase down whether we split the district or not. And to take money away from other city services, I feel, would be an irresponsible move at the whim of somebody on the city, or on the, the school board who wants to kind of try this out and see if it's a good idea or not. If the school board wants to pursue that, if Rancho Cordova wants to pursue that, I would recommend allowing them to shoulder the financial burden and to not put that on the taxpayer and the residents of Folsom. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments here, or?
Oh, there's not even a, there's not even a resolution. I, I will just, I'll make a motion then. Is that what you want me to do? I will move to pay a third of the cost of the consultant for the feasibility study for splitting the Folsom-Cordova district.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
You don't have a second.
Oh, sorry. Accelerated mode.
I second that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Chalim Charla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
No.
Aquino.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes.
So the motion passes three to one.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, will the clerk please call the next item?
Takes us to council requests for future agenda items.
No, I don't have any.
No items, that takes us to city manager reports.
Okay, thank you. On behalf of the City of Folsom, I'd like to extend our gratitude to Assemblyman John Hoover, John Hoover, Josh Hoover, who represents Folsom. He advocated for and secured funding in the passage of the California Budget Bill that provides $425,000 to the City's Parks and Rec Department for the Johnny Cash Trail Art Experience, specifically an art piece called Cassius Pic Number Two. And as a lot of you may know, Folsom's Johnny Cash Trail is a bike and pedestrian trail that borders Folsom State Prison. It was completed in 2017, and it is, in the future, it will include a large-scale public art project. Installments at the beginning and end of the trail will feature Cassius pics, which are seven-foot-tall bronze guitar pics, and the funding secured by Assemblyman Josh Hoover will be used for the design and fabrication of Cassius Pic Number Two. The first pic is currently slated to be installed by early 2024, so we're very grateful and happy with that news. On Thursday, June 29th, we broke ground on Prospector Park and Fire Station 34, two highly anticipated projects in Folsom Ranch, that's the first park, and the first fire station in South of 50. Felt it was a great day, lots of excitement, and we can't wait for both of those projects to be done. In sadder news, I, it was, it's with great regret that I report the passing of one of our partners, Police K-9 Reno. K-9 Reno was a four-year-old Belgian Malinois that faithfully served the City of Folsom since December of 2020. We thank Elk Grove PD K-9, Amador County K-9, Saks Sheriff K-9, CHP K-9, and Riverside County K-9 with their assistance, and honoring K-9 Reno with a procession on Thursday afternoon. Reno will be missed. The Free Friday Evening Concert Series continues July 14th with the Ariel Jean Band and wraps up the season July 28th with the award-winning Fried Brothers Band. The bands play from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in Folsom City Lions Park. Bring a picnic or purchase food and treats from a rotating selection of food trucks, and you can stay up to date at facebook.com/FolsomParksAndRec. And finally, I can't believe it's a year, but the City of Folsom's Green Bidden Program, introduced in 2022 to comply with state legislation, has reached an important milestone as the city celebrates the program's first anniversary. Since the program's inception, participation has steadily increased. In May, Folsom businesses diverted a record-breaking 27 tons of organics from landfills, marking the highest monthly commercial diversion to date. Since July 22, Folsom residents and businesses have collectively diverted over 11,000 tons of organic material from the landfill. This diversion not only provides a valuable feedstock for compost production, but also helps to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. If you want to learn more, please go to folsom.ca.us/organics. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Aquino?
Just a couple things. Piggybacking on the news from Assemblyman Hoover, just want to give a shout out to Parks and Rec staff, and particularly Tom Hellman. I was with Assemblyman Hoover last Monday, and he said we are the only city in his district who is getting something, and that's because we are the only city who reached out to him. So way to go, Folsom city staff. And then want to thank Parks and Rec and the Fire Department and City Manager's Office and our communication staff. I thought the groundbreaking was fantastic at Prospector Park and Fire Station 34. I especially loved kind of our parade. My bike is still decorated, and it will probably stay like that forever, so. And then I would just ask that, in addition to adjourned in memory of Keone Hubbard and K-9 Officer Reno, that we add John Snook to that list, too, please. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Kozlowski?
So I attend a local trivia contest every Monday evening, and if you ask me offline, I'll tell you where. And we have a word jumble every week that is like a series of words, you have to unscramble the letters, and yesterday's answer was, "School starts in four weeks." So that's my report for tonight.
Vice Mayor Chalim Charla.
Chalim Charla. You know, I want to start with Shannon. Thank you so much for coming. Colleen's? Oh, yeah, I know. Collins.
Yes.
Yeah, Collins, right? Thank you for coming and expressing, you know, your opinion and your view. It's important. We have to listen to our residents. You are the one who is putting us in this seat. At the same time, when we are making the policies or the decisions, we have to see our partnerships and neighbors and future activities, how the blood flows. So all those are very important. So it's not that, you know, you came here opposing, but we made that decision, at least me, my SOT is, keeping our Folsom view in neighbors' eyes, you know, we are partners, we want to work together. Again, it's not that we are going to put an application for a school district split, no. I agree with Aquino that we are going to see as a part of this research whether we can get our American River Canyon, that little piece, to be pulled into Folsom-Cordova School Districts. We have a formal report. We have a formal report to call that action. So I just want to, you know, call out and thank you for saying. And I know, I got it on quick before 7:30. So I attended the Eagle Scouts, Mr. Christian Lizaik, I practiced his last name pronunciation, great young man, and he did a, a nice, two informational kiosks at the Gold Ridge Elementary School. Believe me, everyone is watching that one. It is giving inspiration to the youth and especially the Eagles, you know, look at, look at the projects which are going to stay there forever. You know, in that note, I was encouraging them to do some more projects with the City of Folsom as well. I was just giving one of those ideas. And Ellen is, you know, always working on tree planting, you know, watering the trees, keeping our city green. So I gave some tips for them, so hopefully they're going to be making the future Eagle some projects with City of Folsom. And the other one, we just approved a lighting and landscaping commissioner role or a committee role. I sincerely want to request City of Folsom, we still have a couple of more vacancies in my mind. I know Vijay was saying, we are volunteers here. Yes, we do, we do get paid $600 per month, but thank you for your volunteer work. If you are passionate to, you know, Folsom is fond of volunteerism. We need your help. We have about half a dozen to eight vacancies. Lighting and landscaping is, that, that unit is a face of our town. If somebody drives to our town, what is that first thing they see? How our landscaping looks, the greenery look, all those things. So these team residents partner with our vendor to make things better. I want to emphasize the word, a partnership. That's how we can make better things in this town. So if you are interested, please reach out to our city clerk or any of us here. We love to accommodate and fill some more of those roles. And also, I got a, you know, opportunity to go and have a grand opening and welcoming a poppy bank. I love that name, poppy bank, you know, the flower after the California flower name. And another successful rodeo closeout without any hurdles, you know, you know, I was, you know, praying there are 7,000 people inside that. I was volunteering as well with my colleagues also. A sincere thanks to our Choose Folsom team for successfully organizing and each and every of our team members from City of Folsom, especially from Kelly's team, from Parks and Rec, to the police, IC Always, and Fire, and I'm sure our Public Works, everyone, including the signering waiver description from our city attorneys and all those. We partnered with Choose Folsom to make another iconic event more successful. Thank you again, and good night, Folsom.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. For me, it's a great job to the Choose Folsom team for a fantastic three days of rodeo. I agree, they were a lot of fun. This year's was a little different. The energy was great. I thought it was probably, out of all the rodeos I've been to, I think this one was what, the best year of the past, I don't know, 10, 12, 13 years. Summer concerts are still in effect. For more information about them, you can go to the city's website, the Palatias website, or the Historic District Folsom's website. Again, shout out to Assemblyman Josh Hoover for obtaining those $425,000 for the Johnny Cash Art Trail Experience. National Night Out is Wednesday, August 2nd. This is a great time to sign up and have visitors from our public safety crew, council members, and city staff. It's also a great time to get together and know your neighbors a little better. Also, Elaine, happy birthday. It'll be 111 degrees, but I'm sure that-
I thought you were going to say I was turning 111. I was like, good God. What happened?
Yeah, it'll be hot. Happy birthday. And then I will close today's memory and a few people. John Snook, who is the founder of Snook's Candy, K-9 Reno, Keono Hubbard, and a former neighbor whose four kids still live in front of me, Kirsten Davis. She is a local school teacher who passed away suddenly over the weekend, leaving four kids. So in memory of these four individuals, we will now close the meeting at 7:31.